I'm now recording.
Woohoo, okay.
Okay.
Okay, next on the agenda is patron comments. And I did receive one, I, we did advertise that if you wanted to make a patron comment, you could email anytime between six and seven to my email address. And we did get one public comment and I'm just gonna read the email that I got. And this is from Eric Jordan, who is a social studies department at Blue Peak High School. And he says, President Manzio, my public comment is on behalf of the trust lines plan for year 2020 to 2021. On the Blue Peak High Trust Lines request, there is a request for $120,000 salary and benefits for a social worker. This is an increase of $46,000 from 2019 to 2020 school year trust lands. I don't know the cost of benefits, but I feel that they are not worth $46,000. Please look over this request with what is best for our students and not just to throw money at a problem, at that problem. I have no doubt that Blue Peak students can benefit from having a social worker, but 46,000 more from last year seems extreme. 2019, 2020 school year trust lines plans for Twilla area, and he includes the link for the Twilla area. So I will forward that email to Jackie, so you have it for the minutes. And as normal, we don't really talk about the public comments during public comment because it's public comment, but we do have trust lines plans on our agenda from later, later in the meeting, and we can talk about that then. But thank you, Mr. Jordan, for your comments. And that was the only one that I received during that public comment time. So next on the agenda are the consent items, which include the minutes expenditure revenue and dispersant reports, personnel decisions, and amended trust lines plan, 150 mile contests and surplus. So unless somebody would like to pull something, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent items.
Marissa, I don't want to pull anything, but I did have, I guess, maybe a question for everybody. So I noticed that there was a-
Then pull that item, pull that-
Okay, then it's the 150 mile requests.
Okay. Okay, is there a motion for the consent items minus 5.7?
I move that we approve the consent calendar with the exception of 5.7.
Is there a second?
A second up.
Was that Julia or Melissa?
Julia.
Julia.
Julia, okay, it's been moved by Alan and seconded by Julia to approve the consent items minus 5.750 mile contest. Is there discussion to that motion? Seeing none, you'll need to turn off, you'll need to turn on your microphones to vote. And I'm gonna do roll call votes today because I can't see everybody at the same time. So then we'll know that everybody voted. So Julia, how do you vote?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Camille?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Alan?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So motion carries. Okay, 5.750 mile contest, Camille.
I just noticed that it looks like boys basketball is supposed to go to St. George the end of June. And I'm just wondering, I, I mean, I realize no one, we don't know if that is even going to be happening in June, but I'm just a little concerned about approving it before we know? Or do we still go ahead and approve it? And then if they cancel it, they cancel it?
We actually, we actually do know.
Oh.
So UHSA activities are gonna be canceled through the rest of the year, which will also mean no clinics and camps during June. That, that came today at our superintendent's meeting. I just haven't had a chance to get that out to folks. But so coaches and ADs don't know that. But with the governor's declaration of till through the rest of the year, that is technically not just end of May, but that technically goes to the end of our school fiscal year, which is June 30th. So.
Okay, so do we need to, so do we not approve that then, or?
Sounds like we can't.
But we can do August?
Right now, it's my understanding that anything after July 1st is counted towards that next quote unquote school year, even though we haven't had our first day. So we're hopeful that July activities and practices, et cetera, can, can happen. But camps, et cetera, where there's any kind of gathering, I mean, we've been told by the health department that those gatherings will be the last thing to be restored on restrictions and that they probably will not go to large areas, I mean, large gatherings above, it might go from 10 to 20 or 10 to 50, but it won't go enough for like a graduation, et cetera, at least through June 30th, or camps, or that kind of a thing.
Okay.
I just haven't had a chance. It came today from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, and I haven't had a chance to sort through those notes and type that up. And we're planning on doing that tomorrow after we talk about this in SES. So I would at least table that if, if we can, if we get other clarification in May, we can, if that's even possible. But there's a chance now that it won't happen in anything in June.
Okay. So we would talk about a motion then in regards to the 150 mile contest minus the boys basketball trip to St. George in June.
All right, so I motion that we approved the 150 mile contest for everything, for the two trips to Cedar City and the St. George girls volleyball. So like you said, everything except for boys basketball in June.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Melissa?
Yes.
Okay, it's been moved by Camille and seconded by Melissa to approve 5.750 mile contests with the exception of boys basketball traveling to St. George in June. Is there discussion to that motion?
Can I just ask to clarify, are we?
Yes, you may.
Are we, are we tabling the June trip or are we denying the June trip?
Right now, we're not approving it.
Okay.
So.
So it might be without prejudice?
Yeah.
Meaning they could come back if something changes with the UHSA?
That is correct.
They could come back in May and resubmit.
Okay.
Alan, it comes down to, Madam President, it comes down to the, and UHSA hasn't had enough time. They did send out a all spring sports and seasons. So the question is, if something, a clinic is happening in July, is that part of spring activities or is that part of the next year activities? And how can that be if the next year doesn't start for July 1st? So it's that definition of is, are camps and clinics a part of the next year or are they part of the current year? So I think UHSA will give us more clarification in the next couple of days.
Well, if we get further clarification, then they're welcome to resubmit it, how's that? Or ask for a revote. Does that work?
And, and I know, I was just gonna say, I know Stansberry, Alan, maybe your St. Grantsville, they all go to that St. George basketball camp at Dixie. And so Twilla got theirs in right now. I would imagine, I would imagine Dixie's gonna cancel all their camps. And so this was probably put in before all this stuff went through. But I'm hoping if, if Dixie doesn't cancel, they're gonna be following the state and they'll be able to come back and we can approve it.
Right.
Just trying to give people enough time where if they need to change those reservations or get some refunds on hotel, et cetera, you know, they can, they can work that.
Okay, we'll take a vote on that. Julia, how do you vote?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Camille?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So motion carries. Okay, um, next is reports, although I have had, on our agenda, I'm gonna just ask the board for what they'd like me to do. On our agenda, public comment was specifically said to be submitted between 6:00 and 7:00 PM. I did receive an email at 4:15 and I've gotten a couple of messages of people saying that the person who submitted that wanted it to be read during public comment. Is anybody opposed to that being read as part of our public comment?
I think we need to provide the same consideration that public has offered to us as far as being flexible with while we're learning. I think we need to be flexible with them as well. So I'm okay with reading it.
Okay, is there anybody who disagrees? Okay, then we'll go backwards for just a second to patron comments and I'll just read this comment.
Marissa, well, I just, I would just stipulate that it's the same thing as far as, I don't know how long it is, but three minutes of it short.
It's not, it's the same, so. But good point, thank you. Okay, it is from Rachel Coats. And it says, good afternoon regarding dress code policy change, all changes seem reasonable except the part added about no offensive attire. Offensive is a broad word that is based on opinion. It can't be argued that something is vulgar, crude, profane, violent, or sexually suggestive. However, what may seem offensive to one may not be offensive to another. And who decides what is offensive or not? If someone is asked to not wear something because it's offensive, then it is just as offensive to the person who wore the item to be asked not to wear it. Also, no sunglasses, makes sense, but maybe clarified that they aren't to be worn as glasses on the face. Some kids wear them hooked on their shirt or on top of their head like a headband, so they're easily accessible when they go outside. It seems pretty common sense that they would be allowed this way, but just all teachers and faculty are on the same page. It may be better to clarify. The part that talks about under garments must be covered. What if a student, what if students, and in parentheses it says, girls, aren't wearing bras? And so in this case, any tank top would be appropriate because there wouldn't be a strap to show in the first place. I only bring this up because unfortunately, there are young women who don't wear bras when they are necessary to secure their parts and also, so they aren't revealed through clothing. Not sure how the wording should go, but it's something that should be addressed. Maybe the same wording as used in hairstyles, parentheses distracting would work, question mark, thanks, Rachel Coats. So keep that in mind for our discussion later on dress code. And sorry, Rachel Coats, I didn't read that before. Okay, skipping forward to 6.1 Board of Education reports, reports from the Board of Education Audit Budget Committee. Scott Bryan, do you wanna do that?
I don't know that there's, it feels like we've reported since we've met last, yes?
I thought so, but.
Yeah, I. I don't know, maybe Alan can help me. I, I don't recall really any update. I'm missing something. Marissa, you?
No, I couldn't think of anything either. We're basically just trying to finish up the few audits that we've done and getting ready to start a new one. Right, Alan, do you have anything different?
No.
Okay, that's a boring report, sorry. Does anybody have any questions about the audit committee?
I have a quick question.
Yeah, go ahead.
You said that they're starting a new one. Are they, is it a new, like, department, new area, new audit overall?
We don't, it, it's not an overall audit. We've, have a list of different things that the auditors felt like there could be some vulnerabilities in. And we've been through, how many, off the top of my head, technology. Scott and Alan are gonna have to remind me, and maybe Lark. Our biggest one has been technology.
We did human resources and technology. We did the, the-
CTE.
CTE.
And so, and this is based off a list of the survey that we did, Camille, about two years ago, from the SES as well as the board, of areas that we felt we might have some risk or some concerns. It was, you know, kind of a survey, and it is a couple of years old now at this point. It might not be bad, Marissa, that we have a few new board members that we put that survey out again, just to kind of get a feeling of, you know, and, and as we talk through it, it's not like that we've been held to it rigidly. It's been kind of like, well, this kind of fits in this category, kind of thing. I think we talked a little bit about this next round, purchasing and purchasing cards, Marissa.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, that was it.
The next area, so Camille, and frankly, I guess maybe we just do it this way, from any of the board members, and Camille and Melissa, particularly, you're new, but Julia as well, that's on the call, on the line. If you have anything that you think might be good, just to kind of look under the hood, let, let one of us know that's on that committee. We can surely bring it up and at least have a conversation about it, see if it fits into that scope. It's not necessarily all financial, it's, it's compliance, it's, RIT was really a conversation about compliance and vulnerability. It was not a financial audit. And this audit is not just those things, but, so if you have other things, just drop us, someone just give us a call offline and we can add that.
It's actually not really financial at all. It's mostly processes and how our procedures align with our process and if we're, if our processes are following our procedures. So there's a lot, I mean, sometime a little finance can come into it, but we have financial auditors. This is more about process and procedure.
Okay. Thank you.
That answer your question?
It does, yeah, thank you.
Yep, sure, no problem. Okay, and the other reports, unless there were other questions about the audit committee, the next report is from the Insurance Wellness and Nutrition Committee. So that would be Julia.
And so we haven't met just recently for obvious reasons, but everybody should have got a survey sent to them, talking about some of the, what would be appropriate in terms of the people who are on the HSA or the wellness, doing all of the wellness, all of the steps for the wellness completion, to say that like, would, would a payment on the premium differential be better? Or like what, what, what type of incentive would be the best that, that the most of the people would like to see to get more people on, to do that incentive? And I think we are almost, we're almost there. I, do, do you know Scott or Lark if, if the numbers have changed? Because I haven't seen them for, we were at like-
Yeah, we were 58%, so we're getting pretty close to our 60% goal. We just got a report this week saying we're at 58, so.
So we're really close, we just need a few more. And that has to be done by June 1st, is that right?
Or did we?
We need it by then, we were hoping to have it by now, but yeah, drop dead deadline.
Just a clarification, Julia, that is just the 58%, because we're higher in a lot of other areas, that's just on the digital coaching, is that correct?
Yes.
So that's the only, only area that we're lacking.
Yeah, we've covered all of the other areas, for sure.
Did we determine what the penalty or the premium co-pay would be for those that did not participate? Has that been?
No, that's part of the survey that Julia was talking about.
So I think once we get the results from the survey back, we were gonna decide on, you know, what the majority of the people thought would be appropriate. So, because we only had like a $20, wasn't it, differential? And the survey said like, would 50 be more incentivizing? Or there was a couple of other options. But next year, we have to have even a higher percentage. So we just have to make sure everybody's really want to do that wellness program. And it's pretty easy, it's just some videos you have to listen to and, you know, getting it, your things marked off, a wellness check and a couple of things.
Okay, any other questions? No? Okay, perfect, thank you. Next is 7.1 Superintendent's Report, Superintendent. Turn on your, on your mic.
Thank you, Marissa. I had prepared to, and I did attach a report, I was gonna focus a lot on the, what we call the bill book or the legislative summary. And I still want to do that, just cover a couple of highlights. But I also want to say that quite a bit has changed. We were on a WebEx with USBE at 8:00 AM this morning and we finished at about 4:00. And I have about 12 pages of notes. And just because we had the board meeting scheduled, I didn't have time to prepare those and get an update out, a daily update. Doleen went ahead and covered SES meeting, which we're having daily. We'll be giving a lot of information out tomorrow. I hesitate to go over all of the budget information. You see on your, it's not on the screen, but in the packet, the quick guide is of the 2020 legislative session includes growth that was funded, 7.18% growth in, and the value of the WPU was 6%. And then the 1.18 was in minimum school program, 9.5% total minimum school program, 5, 5.2 billion, which was a 9.5 increase from fiscal year 20, or the previous fiscal year. And then the total public education fund was five, like I said, 5.91, 5 million. So the weighted pupil unit went from 3,532 to 3,745. There, there was a couple of good things that happened, but this morning, the point was made that with the special session starting on Thursday, there's a couple of items that will have to do with the budget. And so the superintendents and Superintendent Dixon didn't want to spend one to two hours talking about the budget when we don't know if we have a good number to talk about. We, I know that Lark has a meeting, I think it's next week, with business administrators where they're gonna get more into the details. We don't know if and when and how much and where the budget allocation or appropriation will be affected. So we just didn't want to get into the weeds on the money as much as, as we normally would on the, on the, on the funding highlights. Does that make sense to everyone? I will tell you that, you know, we've received the budget detail, we're hoping for the best. We're hoping to be, if you've seen the news, you know that Granite School District settled on 5% increase. We've been asked to be very conservative because we don't know where the money is gonna be pulled back from, from the legislature with the special session. So hopefully we'll know that in the next week or two so that we can begin our negotiation session. I don't need to read the whole PowerPoint for you, you guys, I will stand for questions. I will tell you that Lark, the initial plan was on the 24th at 3:00. And that might have changed now, but for Lark to go over the spreadsheets that we get from the state that are basic calculations on what the new money, how that would flow to us, in what funds, but that might be delayed. We usually need that first meeting so that we can begin negotiations and start looking at good numbers. But it, it doesn't make much sense to go far down that road if that number is in question. Any questions on that piece, at least the, the budget summary? And the, the second part of that is the bill summary of bills that passed and bills that did not pass. And I can tell you, most of you guys, I think we're at the USBA regional meeting and you saw the scorecard and we did pretty good as far as JLC and those priorities. So thank you, board members who serve on that committee and who do that voting. And, and that's, that's work behind the scenes that also advocates for our students and for education, K-12. We'll give you a heads up that I had an email discussion with our representatives and our senators about House Bill 332, which is the special needs scholarship slash voucher bill, which is specifically listed for an override vote and which USBA opposes and superintendent supposes, USSA. So be sure to reach out to your legislator and let them know how you feel about that. We have no problem with special needs scholarship. We have one, Carson Smith, and that being enhanced. But, you know, Utahns have spoken pretty loudly about voucher bills and that it presents some equity issues and diverts money from K-12 into private enterprise. So we're, we're pretty opposed to that, as I think are most educational groups or all education groups. So any questions about the, the bill book summary or the financial summary? We'll get into the weeds a little bit more with Lark when we have that budget review. Anything? If not, I'll, I'll finalize my report by saying tomorrow will be an important daily update with the governor's announcement at 1:30. We did take a break and we listened to his announcement and the soft closure has been extended through the end of the school year, which superintendents and USBE is interpreting as July, or June, I'm sorry, June 30th. It will mean that graduation, a traditional graduation events will be canceled, as will all spring UHSA sponsored activities. We will continue to provide what the state superintendent called the five essentials. And I'll send that out tomorrow. Basically, it's online educational opportunities at home for students, special ed accommodations and some individual tutoring. Evaluation and identification has kind of been put on hold, as are some IEP services. Pockets will still go out. I know that teaching and learning is working on a third packet. We got graduation guidance, grading guidance and credit guidance. We're likely to not give grades K through six, but our junior high and high school, we're gonna get out that guidance document so that our teachers know how we're gonna handle that. We don't want to do any harm to students. Right now, let's, we admit that we're not really doing full virtual education. We're doing crisis management and emergency services to try to provide some educational opportunities for kids. But stress is high, cortisol in the brain for kids and families. People are losing jobs and unemployed, they're worried. Some have totally disengaged, others are really doing a good job. Some report feeling overwhelmed. So we're also worried about the social emotional learning and the mental health. Superintendent Dixon talked about three phases, the one we're in now, and then that summer bridge, she called it, learning. And then the new, the new future, for lack of a better word, and in entering the fall and how we're going to close some of those learning gaps. So we've got to put our head together and make some tough decisions. We've got an SES meeting scheduled for tomorrow. We'll get out the best and most accurate and detailed information that we have to everyone tomorrow in our daily update. We are going to do some type of celebration of graduation. The best suggestion that I heard, and I've heard everything from parades to drive-ins, when I talked with the health department, they're really worried about parades, not from the kids driving their cars, but if people congregate on parade routes, or if people congregate when they're supposed to be in their cars that are drive-in and are together. Most districts are looking at something virtually. I know we're looking at things like signs in the yards for seniors and some videos and what can we, we can do virtually. So the best idea I heard was, let's let principals and their student body officers and their staff members- the best idea I heard was let's let principals and their student body officers and their staff members with parent input come up with, and it might look different at Doug Way and that crowd. They actually did not tell us that we couldn't have graduation for very small schools. As a matter of fact, that came up. So if you're at Doug Way and you have nine students, the problem is nobody would be, they would have to broadcast that you can find a room that's big enough to socially distance with nine students. But we couldn't do that, of course, at, when we're graduating three to 400 at some of our larger high schools. So but most people that have multiple high schools in a district or singles are saying, let's, let's listen to the kids and let's find out what they want and how they want to be honored, how they want to be celebrated. Or, and then let's have them bring that back in May with some suggestions on what would work best for them for graduation. So there's just, there's a lot of things up in the air right now. Concurrent enrollment, driver's ed, grading, et cetera. We'll get some guidance. I'll get that out tomorrow when I have an opportunity with SES to, to, to prepare that. Any questions from today? It was really quite a bit of information.
I do have a question and I don't know, I'm sure you guys are going to talk about this tomorrow in SES, but I'm hearing from different parents and that are close to me. What are the possibility or options of just being completely done? Like no online schooling? Maybe not necessarily today, but through the end of April and, you know, saying online curriculum is done, May 1st or something along those lines.
Well, the, the reality is, and that was talked about today. If we were not to continue education through the end of the school year, our funds would not be guaranteed. We could use some of the CARES funds and some of the federal funds to backfill that, but it would put our employees at risk. The only way we can guarantee that we're continued to be held harmless, my understanding is if we do that. Now, we've, we've got people right now that are saying, hey, we're on survival and my husband lost a job. We're not worried about school. It's too much. We know that. We're giving them resources. We're going to try to continue to talk about leniency and not overwhelming with just assignment after assignment that we're just giving them some resources for learning. We're going to have to address some huge gaps. That was the biggest concern is that if you cut school out early, then, you know, that might work for a, a family that supports education. They might be doing stuff on their own, but what about some of your most vulnerable populations? It might put them even at more disadvantage. So the other thing that would have to happen is you as a board would locally have to alter your graduation requirements. Now you can do that because the state requires 24 and of course we require more. You could alter that and if people had 24 credits, if they were in the right core areas, you could grant those diplomas. So that's, that's totally up to you. And I just lost, I just lost connection. Did you lose connection, Marissa?
No, I can still see you and hear you.
My screen just went totally blank. Okay, so you know, that's a good question and folks talked about it. You know, nobody has a playbook that's, that's got all the.
There he goes. Now he's gone. He's still talking. Let me grab it.
All right. So while she is gone, I think we all know that he's going to probably say something along the lines of no one knows exactly what to expect over these next couple of months and couple of weeks, but we all need to be prepared and be flexible with each other as much as we can. So.
So we're going to social distance. I, I just would say there was that issue of equity for high impacted groups. There was that issue of funding for the rest of the school year. And, and how big the gap would be coming into next year. So we've got some work to do to figure out. You know, are we going to spend August and September catching up and reviewing? And then shorten our semesters? I mean, there's many options to do. So it's a good question. Camille, there's just no playbook that, that, that is exactly here are the steps you need to take. So those, we already, we already told seniors who met our current graduation requirements that they could graduate early.
Right. Which, and I appreciate your answer and I realize, you know, that this, like we know, no one's ever done this before, so we're all trying to figure it out. But I also worry, like you said, you know, there are a lot of kids out there struggling and families that are struggling and I, I don't want to forget that either, you know, and I want to make sure that, and I've brought this up before, you know, that we are being accommodating and helping as much as we can and not
Right.
part of the problem. We want to be part of the solution. So.
Well, and most people feel like even if they aren't doing virtual education, they want to do summer family connections and check-ins because in some cases, the teacher and you know, is in the school is a safe spot for children. And so nobody wanted to, that I heard said, we're going to take May off and be done because they've waived the requirements from the state around the whole 180 days, but they did not give districts permission to end their school days early. You need to go through when you have your graduation listed. You can't make graduation all of a sudden, May 1st.
Right. Okay.
So.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyway, I'll get you back to Marissa. Sorry. Is that what it was? Sorry.
Okay. Any other questions about the superintendent's report?
Yeah, Marissa, I was just going to add to that. Sorry. I don't have a hand raising button. You know, I appreciate that information and we really need to, and just by him stating that in a board meeting and we have 111 people watching on Facebook and I hope that's how we can spread the word that this is a funding issue. This is an issue that we're as a school board not trying to make our kids stay in school to be mean or because this is a very, very stressful time for families and students and teachers. Goodness, our teachers are working so hard and we, anyways, I just think if families are frustrated, just take a step back and breathe and, you know, I think, you know, a lot of this is board members. We've got kids of our own homeschooling from home or daughters that are teachers at schools. I mean, we are understanding where this is coming from and hope that just as parents, if your kids are frustrated, just take a breather. Communicate with the teacher. Let them know so that they can under, you know, we haven't had any problems with teachers not being understanding, but you know, looking at this, this is guidance from the state that Twilla County School District does not have the power just to stop school. So anyways, I, like I said, I think if everyone can just take a deep breath, even if we feel like we can't, even if we're drowning. So I don't know. I appreciate the superintendent's information. I think that's some great clarification. So thank you.
Thank you. Scott Bryan?
Melissa covered it. We're good.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you. Okay. Any other comments? Questions about superintendent's report? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. 8.1 is Trustlands Plan for School Year 2020, 2021. And you have, sorry, you have the Trustlands plans for Grandville, Stanford and Twilla areas. We did have the question in public comment about the social worker at Blue Peak. And does anybody other have, anybody else have questions or comments about the, the Trustlands plans as presented or directors? Do you have anything to say first before that?
Madam Chair, I do know that Jeff has just texted me and did follow up with Kendall. I think we've got some clarification on at least the salary amount for the social worker slash counselor position. Jeff, you want to go ahead?
Jeff? Yeah, so I, I've been in contact with Kendall during our meeting and so that, that salary, while it sounds excessive, that was, he hired Betsy Henninger from the district to do that social worker position at Blue Peak High School. And she came, her salary $90,000 plus. And so with benefits, that's for that number at, he didn't feel like she should take a cut in pay to go be the social worker at Blue Peak. So they just more given the salary that she had in our district already. And last year, the only reason they were able to afford that last year was because they planned on hiring an aide to help her. And they never got the aide hired. So they had enough money in the budget to pay her salary last year. But for this coming year, they're planning on hiring the aide as well. And so that's why the additional funds for that, if you've looked at those numbers.
Okay. Julia? Thank you, Jeff.
Yes. I just had a question along those same lines. So as a social worker, can she show some, like our counselors do a data project, can she show some data and some things about how the work that she's doing is helping with those Blue Peak students?
I, I believe that is happening, but however, that was not part of the plan as far as the plan, she was built in to help with like, the point they were using her to identify was graduation rate. And so I believe that her data and helping kids is a sub, a sub component piece of that graduation rate number. But I can certainly gather that data. I'm, I'm sure they are keeping data on what she's doing. They are data driven. I, I would be happy to do that. However, I do have to point out that data is not part of the Trustlands plan you have in your hand tonight. So, but, but that social workers hiring is consistent with their 90 day plan. And so I, I pushed it forward to you guys thinking that it was appropriate, but if you want to, I can certainly go back and have further conversations with Kendall about that if you'd like me to.
I, I personally think that the employee that reported that, and I do appreciate people looking at those things, may have assumed that the difference was between a, a, a starting salary and someone who has well over 20 years. I don't exactly know how many years Betsy has, but she's, she's quite experienced.
Well, and she also brings a master, she has a master's degree and so that bumps her up as well. So that's why, that's why the salary is as big as it is.
She's actually a licensed counselor in addition to a school counselor and a behavioral intervention specialist. She's, she's a licensed counselor and I know she is working with some of our counselors or working towards licensure. She's the supervisor. For example, Tony Cloward, I think she's doing a lot of that supervision and Brian Duncan. So Matt would be able to speak to that, but.
I think we need to be careful in, I mean, don't, let's separate the person from the, the position. I mean, knowing that the person they've hired is a higher salary person, but.
Right.
That answer your questions, Julia?
Yeah, I, I just would like to kind of see some of that data of how, how some of that's working. I think, I think they obviously need a social worker there. They've got a lot of low economical students and a lot of different problems that other schools don't have. I was just curious like how the counselors do a data project and we can kind of see like what's going on and what groups and things that are working that if we could see the progress that she was making or the person that was there was making.
Absolutely. We, we.
Jeff, Jeff finishing and Matt?
I, I was just responding to Julia that we'd be happy to get that data for you guys.
Thank you. Matt?
And I know that Betsy has her own data project that she's, she's working on, tracking her stuff and she's working with the counselors on their different programs and data. They, they communicate on a regular basis and, and really seem to be meshing as far as what I have been told, it, it seems to be working well. They're, they both, you know, they vary. Each group has their own data projects that they're collecting on the work that they're doing. So that, that information will come to us eventually. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Matt. Are there other questions from board members in regards to the Trustlands plans?
I have one other question.
Go ahead. I have one too.
With West Elementary, they, they say they're hiring rotation teachers. How's that working? Like, because it's like $40,000, but what, is it part-time teachers or is it just their own staff that's doing rotations?
So I don't think those are actually teachers. Those are, I, he said, he called them rotation teachers that are aides.
Okay.
I, I think.
I made more sense with what the, the dollar amount was, but I was just wondering.
Yeah. Yeah. And so I believe he used the word teacher, but I believe he meant like a para educator that's just taking kids so that teachers can have time to PLC and such.
Okay.
I had a question. A lot of the plans include technology, which is great, but in light of our conversation a couple of weeks ago in regards to technology within a district, I wanted to make sure that before we approve those, do they meet the criteria, Bryce? You know, the, for the IT department in setting those up and maintaining and I just felt like it was a little bit against what we talked about last time, although I'm not opposed to any of the labs or the technology.
Yeah, I think it, right now, we're still a little bit. We don't have a full direction that we're going. So as long as the, the labs are, are setting up in, in district approved devices, we're okay with it. Most of them are going with Chromebooks. And so as long as they're going with a district approved Chromebook device. We still have a few schools here and there that are, you know, still trying to find the best deal on Amazon. And so we're trying to steer them away from that. Because we can still find better deals than even Amazon through our vendors. But for the most part, I, I think we're really going in, in a good direction there, but it's smaller. Until we, you know, really as a, as a district decide on what plan we want to go forward with. I think this kind of one-off, small purchases are, we're doing okay.
Okay.
And I, I don't want to speak for the other directors, but I, I think for my area, I, I think it's, it's prerequisite that they would have to go through technology to purchase those. They don't get to go rogue and get out on Amazon or eBay and purchase things. They would have to go through Bryce to, to get those. So just my thoughts.
Good. That's a great idea. We'll give them the best deal.
Yep.
Could, could we stipulate that as part of accepting, you know, that we require all technology purchases to be reviewed and be district standard, well, be district standard and be reviewed by Bryce before their purchase occurs?
Are you going to make a motion? I didn't hear that last comment.
I just said that that's easy to do and, and most of our principal, all of our principals know to go through the technology department for any purchase like that, especially because a lot of these are relatively larger purchases. It's more than just like one machine. And so they know to get the most bang for their buck, they need to go through Bryce's department. But we can certainly send that out to let principals know that if they need to, if they have that as part of their Trustlands plan, that before they could purchase that, they need to work with the technology department to ensure the best price, but also that the machines are in line with, with our vision for the district.
I think that's, I would agree. It's, it's not historically been always that way with CTE purchases, but I think in the last year, it's, we've really worked hard and I think it's much improved.
Anytime we can push out additional reading material for Bryce Erle, I'm all for that. Well, that's awesome.
Okay. Any other questions about Trustlands?
I have, I just have one other comment and it's kind of a shout out because some of those, some of those plans were doing a 12% increase.
Yeah.
Like, wow, way, way to go. Way to push the bar because I mean, most of them are like three. So, good job.
All right. We do, yeah.
I just wanted to piggyback on that because I know that there was some concern and challenges of getting these Trustland plans in place and ready to go in time for this meeting and congratulations to all the principals for making it happen. It's awesome. So thank you, you guys.
They did a great job.
They did do a great job. They're great. And I really like them in the format of the, where we kind of see what their 90 day Um, and I really like them in the format of the, where we kind of see what their 90 day plan looks like. And I like the format a lot. Okay, is there a motion in regards to the Trustlands plans?
I'll make a motion to accept the Trustlands plans.
And that, that works.
That works.
Approved, yeah. I bet approved.
Could you add or stipulate that those IT purchases, uh, need to be in compliance with district, uh, standards and that they're approved by Mr. Early?
I will add that the IT purchases need to be in conjunction with the district standards and approved by Bryce Early. As part of the motion.
And I'll second that.
Okay. So moved by Julia and seconded by Scott to approve the Trustlands plans for 2020, 21, with the stipulation that all technology purchases need to be approved by the IT Director Bryce Early and in line with district technology, um, guidelines. Any discussion to that motion? Okay, uh, Julia, how do you vote?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Camille?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, 8.2 is the Lakeview Business Park Plan. Um, Mr. Reynolds will let you, um, talk about that. We do have members from Grantsville City. I think the Grants, the mayor and attorney are online as well as members from the Romney Group. Just to answer questions as needed. So, Lark.
Yeah. Okay, well, good. I, before we turn the time over to them, because I'm sure they want, you have some questions and, and these are the people that can answer that. I just wanted to point out that you, um, have three documents in there. Two of them are added, uh, I think just yesterday. So, uh, but the main thing that you've seen is, is the budget. I, I want to thank, um, Anthony sent that out to us early on. So you make sure you could have time to review it and, and ask them the questions you have. Uh, the last two came in because, uh, they wanted to make sure we have all the legal documents we need. Uh, the one that actually says draft, uh, school district interlocal agreement, that was, uh, what was voted on last month. Um, the only difference as I looked through it was just that, uh, you know, that last month we had an, an agreement with some blanks in there about dates and budgets. And, and this is just to, uh, kind of dot our i's and cross our t's on that. And, and then in addition, they have a resolution there. Um, but, uh, yeah, I think it's just appropriate if you have some questions. We'll, I think we just, uh, um, go ahead and let you ask your questions for the, those who are present. That we've got the experts here to answer those.
Okay. Um, and we're trying to approve, um, a budget tonight.
Yeah, so I, I'm Adam Long. I'm the attorney for the Grantsville Redevelopment Agency, meaning I drafted these documents for better or worse.
Thank you.
So at your last meeting, you essentially approved the interlocal agreement. Um, as Lark mentioned, this is a, a resolution to go along with it, just so we have a nice clean record of the project and make sure we've hit all the statutory requirements. Now, one of those statutory requirements is that a tax entity, in this case, the school district consent to the project area budget. Um, and that was one of the questions that came up last time. The project area budget in this case, um, with the statutes as they are today, is essentially a set of, of financial projections and responses to specific statutory requirements detailing, uh, some of the financial aspects of the project area. So it's important to know the project area budget in this case doesn't control the flow of money. And, you know, in reality, those expect, those financial projections may be different than expectations. Uh, the interlocal agreement, however, is what controls the flow of tax increment and who gets distributed what dollars and for what period of time. I'm happy to answer questions specific to the documents or, or to the legal, where we stand legally and when what we're trying to do. Um, otherwise, you know, at some point, you would approve the motion. Uh, I mean, approve the resolution by motion rather than just approving the agreement.
Julia, do you have a question?
No. Sorry.
That's okay. Okay, anyone else? If you don't have questions, then I need a motion.
I do have a question. Can you just help me understand the housing line on the budget?
So that's a, that's mandatory by statute. When the, when Title 17C, which is the redevelopment statutes that govern projects like this, when that was rewritten in 2016, that was added across the board for all project areas. Uh, there's no way to avoid that essentially. The legislature gave us that. So what those funds are used for, uh, they're set aside in a separate housing account, uh, for the Grantsville Redevelopment Agency. And there are a variety of things that can be used for in general. It's an income targeted housing fund. There are also some options of sending the money either to a, a county housing authority or to the Oling Walker Fund. But essentially it's money that's earmarked and has to be used for income targeted housing.
And that's a percent of budget?
It's, it's 10%. And that's, that's by state statute.
Thank you. Other questions?
Can I just point out a few more things?
Okay, go ahead.
So as, as you look through it, I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of this. There's a really, I think, three pages. Where you have a detailed breakout of the numbers. Hopefully my, what I wrote in there, I won't go over it. Hopefully that made sense to you. But I wanted to point out as you look through it, uh, what I appreciate is it has a base tax year because that shows what, uh, you know, the initial 400 acres, the way I understand it is, it's currently not being taxed to us because it's a tax exempt property. So I wanted to point that out because, but the other, the other one is, is the, the property that could be annexed in, the 900 acres across street, and this has both of them. So, uh, um, just wanted to point that out because they'll have the tax year base. Uh, you can see down in there, um, which I just double checked, uh, the 20-year increment that, uh, and it does show what would, that is the 20% that was agreed upon in the, in the interlocal agreement, um, based on the numbers above. So it was just, it was just nice to have it broke out. You can usually see the school district on those lines and go through and, and, uh, and map it out. I think I, I went over, um, the reason it goes to 30 years, hopefully you read that explanation in there, because of the phasing in of, of the different properties. So, um, I thought that, just wanted to make sure you had your opportunity to answer those or ask those questions because I know, uh, some of those came up last time.
Thank you. I think somebody else had a, started to talk too.
Yeah, um, so Lark, maybe you can point, when we approved last time that agreement and you've referenced, um, the, I'm trying to find the doc, the interlocal agreement. Last time there was a blank line that, where we had talked about a cap or a budget. What, and I'm struggling to find where that's at.
Okay, and this new one, it actually listed a date on it because it, correct me if I'm wrong here, um, Adam, but I believe that was, um, because it would reference a date that the budget would be approved. So it was really, that area was, um, on page four of the PDF. If you have it in PDF or has consent to project area budget. Instead of having a blank line in there now, it has April 15th.
Yeah, and really what we're doing is kind of putting our cart before the horse. The actual creation of the project area, so the approval of the project area plan and project area budget by the redevelopment agency is on the agenda for tomorrow night. So the way this interlocal is written for the school district, your approval of this agreement is contingent on certain things happening, essentially contingent on the project area actually getting created. Uh, like I said, that's just to deal with this one day of timing issue we have here.
Yeah, that does answer my question. Thank you. Uh, one other question I have, um, and I, I don't know if Mayor Marshall said it in jest or not, but I want to take him up on his offer. I think he said we could have three seats on his R D A board. I, I've not seen anything in writing to that effect. You know, he, he said it in a public meeting, but I would sure like to see that incorporated some, in some document or some, uh, agreement.
Yeah, and you're gonna have to sic your lobbyists on that. By statute, the R D A board is the Grantsville City Council. Um, we don't have a say in who the actual governing board is.
Well, that was brought up a few times in meetings and that needs to be somewhere. Because as I recall, I think even, I don't want to put words in people's mouths, but it was said by not only Mayor Marshall, but I'm pretty sure, um, Josh, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Romney, you may have said that that was something that could be done.
So I, I think I can clarify the confusion. So prior to, a few years ago, we had a tax entity committee that governed some projects. Um, and that was a committee made up of representatives from all the tax entities. So two city, two from the city, two from the school district, two from the county, one from the State Board of Education and one that represented any special districts. That model has essentially been eliminated, uh, by changes to state statute. And, and the way that worked, the way the tax entity committee worked is essentially it was one body that voted for all the tax entities. So in theory, one of the tax entities, if they were not cooperative, could be brought on board whether they liked it or not. You know, if, if six members of that eight-member body voted for it, you know, the tax entity that voted against it would still be participating. The trade-off for that is, you know, with the current situation, we do interlocal agreements. So we negotiate the specific deal with each tax entity. And whatever terms the agreement are between the specific tax entity and the redevelopment agency. So that's, that's essentially the different path to the same basic result of, of having each tax entity have their say in what their participation is. And in this case, the school district, um, as you know, the, the other tax entities are participating at 90%, whereas a school district is participating at 80%. Uh, whereas under a tax entity, that would be less likely to happen.
I don't think we're talking about the same thing actually. Is Mayor Marshall, are you on the? On the call? I know that.
He has a comment. Sorry.
Go ahead, Alan.
Well, I was just gonna say he has a comment on the chat function that says, I said they could be on the C R A board, which I think is the Community Redevelopment Agency, not the R D A board.
And again, I think we're, we're confused on our terminology. So the, the Grantsville City Redevelopment Agency is the, essentially the entity that, that can do this type of tax increment financing. That's governed by a board and that board is made up of the Grantsville City Council by statute. There is not a, a C R A board and an R D A board are not separate entities. Uh, there is really no such thing as a C R A board. Uh, the C R A is a community reinvestment area, so that's the type of project area we're creating. I'm hoping I'm.
Because Mayor Marshall indicated that, I, he says, quote, "I said they could be on the C R A board, not the R D A board." Can't they delegate, can't they delegate that to folks to serve on those boards? You're saying by statute, is that new?
Uh, we have, we only have one board. Um, that's the governing board of the redevelopment agency and that is by statute, the city council. And that is the way it's always been. Uh, so there's, there's not a separate specific board just for this project area.
That, that's a problem for me because historically we haven't had a lot of, uh, input once these things are signed and done. And there's, uh, you know, that to me is one of the concerns and I'll.
Adam, this is Wade. Could you explain kind of how the R D A agency would be making reports and coming and talking to the, to the school district? I think that'd be helpful for them to understand that process.
Wade, can you say your full name?
Wade, bud, sorry about that. Wade Budge, I'm counsel for Romney Group and just wanted to, I directed the question, I apologize Chair, um, to, um, counsel for the R D A.
Thank you.
Yeah, so the R D A has annual reporting obligations, um, known as a November report because it's due in November for no reason at all. It just is. Um, that report is for the benefit of all the tax entities really, and that describes the agency's activities, uh, what kind of development has occurred, what type of funds have been spent, essentially what's going on. And, you know, straying from the, the absolute legal realities, this is a situation like every other tax increment project where the Grantsville Redevelopment Agency and the school district are stuck with each other forever. So I think it's probably safe to assume that the agency is happy to report on a, on a more frequent basis, if that's what the, what the board desires. And.
I think the point isn't that we're getting a report. I, I think we're looking for a voice. And once this is approved, our voice is now taken from us. Uh, you know, we, we're gonna get reports, but we've made the agreements, we're forevermore. That, that opportunity's gone. This agreement is not with the Romney Group, it's with the Grantsville, you know.
R D A.
R D A. And so I, and so I recognize that this isn't, you know, with, with Romney or the, my feeling is and my concern lies in that once this is agreed to, uh, we've lost all voice. Sure, we'll get an annual report, but whatever that report says, we have no influence on. This is our, kind of our last chance to have any influence.
Yeah, and I could maybe add a little bit of, a little bit of detail as to the arrangement with the Romney Group. That's, the interlocal agreements are effectively step one in this tax increment financing process. That allows the agency to receive a portion of the tax increment. Step two is the agency using that increment for economic development of, of whatever sort that particular project requires. In this case, it's infrastructure for a large-scale commercial industrial development. The agency will have what's called a participation agreement with the Romney Group. And that agreement essentially establishes the terms and conditions the Romney Group has to meet in order to get reimbursed. Uh, that is also on the agenda for tomorrow night. That agreement, as it's currently drafted, which is presumably final form, essentially limits, or it's, it does, it does limit reimbursements to the Romney Group for actual infrastructure costs. So they only get money for infrastructure that's actually constructed, you know, placed into the ground. And that infrastructure has to be the infrastructure of a type that is either dedicated to the city, required by some sort of development application like a building permit or a subdivision, or is basic utility infrastructure, uh, a rail line or communication facilities. Those are the only types of reimbursable expenses. And anything reimbursed is also limited by the actual tax increment generated. So, for example, in the case of a, you know, say the, say a million dollars of infrastructure is constructed and the project essentially stalls out and no buildings are built. Very little tax increment is generated, which means that the developer doesn't get reimbursed. But the tax entities are no worse off because it's all post-performance, meaning none of the tax increment is getting paid out upfront or before it's generated. Uh, maybe, maybe that helps some.
I, I would just say from our side, we, we always have the.
Will you say your name first? Cause we're recording.
Sorry. I would say from the developer's side, we always were hopeful. And I didn't realize that the statute limited the board to the, to, um, city council. Or sorry, the grant council. So we were hopeful that the, and I don't think Mayor Marshall knew that either, um, when he made those comments. We were hopeful we could have, we could have, um, the board be made up of school district members. I think the solution hopefully is that, you know, the participation agreement between the school board and, and Grantsville City really limits, where that money can be spent, where obviously we're very limited in what, what we can get reimbursed for. Uh, again, now this money comes back into our pocket. Um, it's, this is all, uh, for public infrastructure. But, you know, I, I think we made those comments that we were under the impression that, that we wouldn't be able to put you on that board. We were obviously not trying to mislead you in any way. Um, and we learned after the fact that that would be limited. So it sounds, at some point, I, I do know that, um, and Adam, be correct me if I'm wrong, at some point, they did allow other outside parties to be part of that board. Is that right?
Yeah, that I think was the, was a tax entity committee concept that I tried to explain earlier. I wasn't in all those discussions, so I don't know exactly. I wasn't in all those discussions, so I don't know exactly what. What was discussed, but that's my suspicion of where it was coming from.
So I have a question.
Okay, go ahead, Melissa.
So. It's when you say by statute, that only Grantsville City Council can be on it? Or that's just what is usually done? And you cannot make any exceptions, is what you're saying? By law, is that what it is? By law, no one else can be on that?
The the governing board of the Grantsville Redevelopment Agency is the Grantsville City Council.
Okay, but is that a law or can you make an exception and put?
There are, there are no exceptions. That is, that just is.
Is that state statute?
That that is statute, yes.
State statute or Grantsville City statute? Sorry, I'm just trying to understand.
State statute.
Thank you. Alan, how does Alan?
Reference that for us, please.
I'm working on it.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, Marissa.
It's okay, Alan. Do you want to go ahead while he's looking that up?
Sure, um, I guess it's getting dark in here. I don't know if you can see me anymore. Um, sure. I I was just gonna say, I mean, I I understand the concern about having a voice. And at the same time, as I look at the inter local agreement and the budget, I mean, I think. This is our, this is our opportunity to to have a voice and to. You know, provide input slash insight on on what we want to have happen here. I mean, the the reason it doesn't concern me as much. Is because I am convinced that the interests in this case are aligned. And that everyone is interested in generating taxable revenue. So the developer can be reimbursed and and then ultimately we can be, uh, we can collect as the taxing entity. And so I, I mean, the way I, being on the board, I don't know if that, you know, are we approving rail lines or approving construction of? Roads, you know, I I don't feel like for me that really falls within my expertise. And so I don't have, I don't have quite the same discomfort about, you know, not being on that board.
Okay. Thank you. Other comments, questions?
I I think I'm probably stating what many of us are feeling, and Alan, I I agree with you. Except that this is a thirty year agreement and and along the lines. The conversations of today are only going to be as good as what's in writing. As well as understanding kind of our intentions as a board. I agree wholeheartedly that our interests are aligned, particularly with the Romney Group, uh, the, you know, the. The quicker they develop that and we get taxable. Tax dollars at that school only going to benefit us for sure. I think that that working relationship with the city is really important. And and I think that some of the previous agreements and negotiations were based on having that voice in the future. You know, even as our last meeting. And and while I don't think anyone was out to deceive or to. You know, say something that wasn't true, the reality is that was the conversation that was had. And it. It's giving me pause. I, you know, I I was about, I would be, my thought was I could make a recommend, you know, motion with the stipulation that. You know, we have those seats on that RDA board. But but this is making me have a pause, I'll be honest.
Alan, do you have another comment?
I do. I was gonna try and unraise my hand and then raise it, but I just. So.
Okay.
You know, I can understand that. I just trying to think. Creatively, I mean, if if the state statute. Forbids uh school, school board membership. Uh, on the RDA board, is there any other? I mean, absent a vote, is there any other consulting? Input soliciting, I mean, because otherwise, at what point are we ever going to approve? This kind of setup if if we can never be on the RDA board? By state statute.
I I will say, um, it gives me a little pause as well, but I will say that I believe. The discussion we had about this development and the fact that the potential for what it will bring into our community and into our school district. And not even in thirty years, and if it's, if it really built to what I believe the development group wants it to be built to at a rapid pace. It fairly quickly will start receiving some income on property that we've not ever received income on before. The potential to not only our school district and. What could come to our kids in that tax impact, but to our county. Is beneficial, and that's really the only reason I voted for it because I'm I'm typically not. A huge fan, but I think in this large of a project and what it brings and attracts in other business. Is it's great potential for a county. And so. I I guess we have to weigh. Is that, does that benefit outweigh the negative?
And sorry, this is Josh Romney. Just one more comment, uh, speaking to what Marissa's saying. I I will say. Despite everything that's happening in the world today, we all, we all are watching the news and seeing what's happening economically. I think all of us are impacted in one way or another. The one shining star in real estate at least is in industrial. The the fact is that online shopping and online. Purchases are are skyrocketing. Uh, Amazon and others like it are buying and developing as much industrial properties they can buy right now. We're seeing a lot of increased activity on our project. In in addition, that's mostly on the warehousing side. On the manufacturing side, um, companies all across the country are trying to bring overseas manufacturing back into the United States. Costs have gotten more competitive and the risk of operating overseas is obviously people are seeing that there's there's a risk, not just. You know, between um trade values, but also now with company or entire countries being shut down, China's being shut down and and just the risk being out there. So. We're seeing a huge spike in interest in uh and and looking at some manufacturing in Twilla. So. Overall, the project, we're actually very bullish on the project. We're really positive, we're really good about it, uh, moving forward and and uh going as quickly as we had hoped, maybe even faster. Um, so we're excited about that. Um, and in terms of, you know, you having a voice, I mean, again. The participation agreement is a is a really big thing. Um, the other option is, you know, it's possible the legislation changes at some point to allow school board members to be part. Uh, of a CRA and and maybe that's something we can say, hey, if this, if the. If if at some point, uh, the legislation changes, um, you ought to have a seat. I mean, we are talking over a long period of time, so and I I'd be open to that. I'm sure that it sounds like Mayor Marshall's open to that. City Council likely be open to that as well.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I I'll just make one more comment. I. I don't know, it's probably just nothing new, but. Just, I don't know, I I'm really bummed by it. I. I guess when. We're trying to look out for our tax dollars and we, I know this is a good project. I believe in it. I am confident and comfortable with the project itself, but I guess. You know, sometimes in the past. When I wasn't on the board and many of us weren't, when. Others. What do you call RDAs have been extended? They say, well, this, because we didn't have a voice, it got extended without us. And I just, I guess I didn't realize, and obviously none of us realized that. By state statute, that that's not even an option for us to be on it. I I mean, I keep. I'm trying to look things up, right?
Let me just interrupt for a second because it can't be extended because we are signing a resolution right now that limits the time. So they, really, the RDA board is the one that will approve expenditures of the money that's collected by the RDA. So our.
During that time.
During that time period. And the city's percentage and the county's percentage all goes into that pot of money and. That they approve the expenditures from that pot of money. And the that the expenditures have to be approved based on certain criteria. That need the requirements for them to be reimbursed as as he talked about, you know, there are specific things that they can be reimbursed for, and they're specific to infrastructure.
Okay, so. Say the budget, you know, is to spend a certain amount and they don't use it all. Is it guaranteed it gets put back into the correct tax entity? Is, I mean, are those, I know this sounds like a really dumb question, but I'm just trying to make sure that all of those. I don't know, I guess I just thought with one of us or two of us on the board, we. We felt a little bit of. I don't know, that we knew what was going on with it. And I feel like when we sign it. So is every, is all the Ts crossed and Is dotted that everything is going to be followed to that degree? I don't know, and I know it may sound like a dumb question, but I'm trying to just make sure I understand.
Melissa, can I add to that question? So there's got to be something to this because I know that when we talked to Petersons, who had, of course, it wasn't Grantsville City, it was Twilla. They were upset with Twilla because there were promises that they would improve the roads. Here on the depot where we're at, where we have, you know, our bus shop, but that hasn't happened. So what guarantees that the expenditures? Do you know what I mean? Or spent, I mean, does the budget in and of itself guarantee that? Because that hasn't been the case with previous RDAs. Just case in point. Can someone up with that?
Yeah, so. So the agreement between the redevelopment agency and Romney Group, which is on the agenda for tomorrow night. Spells all that out exactly how that money gets spent. It says that the Romney Group can only get reimbursed for specific qualifying infrastructure investments and nothing else. What? Maybe something to think about, and I'm talking above my pay grade here. The concern seems to be from the board. A lack of certainty about how these funds will be spent. And really, once the agreements are approved tomorrow night, presumably. Essentially, the way the money is spent has been established. There's really not. Generally not an opportunity for the agency to approve different sorts of expenditures, uh, because the agreement will be in place with the developer as well. What may help the school board? What if we use the same language that we have in that agreement with the Romney Group? Uh, describing the sorts of qualifying infrastructure investments that are reimbursable. And in this inter local agreement, so in the in the agreement that governs governs the flow of the school's tax increment money. Put that same restriction, and they're saying. You know, anything. Any tax increment from the school district that's not used. For these reimbursable expenses during the term of the agreement would have to get given back to the district. And I think that's, I think that's restating reality, but but whoever mentioned that this agreement is really the the district's opportunity to. To chime in on this is is absolutely correct. This agreements will govern the flow of tax increment dollars for this project area.
And and we're in favor of that. We, if we don't, if we're not getting reimbursed on costs, we want the money going back to the tax and entities as quickly as possible. So there's no reason for it to go anywhere else in our in our mind. We don't, obviously, again, we don't make any money on it, doesn't do us any good, so we want it going back to you as quickly as possible. So we're fine to put that in there.
As I said, I think that's basically restating reality, but. But I think no objection is having that in ink.
And Adam, correct me if I'm wrong, if if we ever did want to make a change or do something, we have to, not that we anticipate that we will or would want to, but either way, we'd have to come back to the school board and get approval. Let's say we want to extend it for two years.
Correct.
We'd have to come back to the school board and get approval at that time to make any sort of change. So. If if there's any change to any of these agreements, we need, we need to come back and get approval from all the authorities to do that.
Correct. And and that's the advantage of. The advantage of doing inter local agreements rather than the tax entity committee is that. The school district is in total control of the flow of your tax increment. You can't be. Outvoted as you could have been on a tax entity committee.
Right. So even if Grantsville City says, hey, we want to extend this for twenty years. Then we come back to the school district and say, hey, are you, are you open extending for twenty years? You say no, then it doesn't extend, right?
Correct.
Okay, I have. Alan Lark and then Scott Bryan.
Thanks, Marissa. Um, I don't want to come across as uh as just a fanboy with this, but I but I did want to. Point out a couple of things because Melissa mentioned. These are our tax dollars, and that to me only drives home the point. There are no tax dollars. There are zero tax dollars. And there have been for the last. Two or three decades when we've been talking about this area being developed, and it is still not developed. And so to my, in my mind, what, you know, it's hard to conceptualize the risk to the district. Because we're sitting at zero. And so if we collect zero, you know, what has changed? And if we collect a hundred million. You know, glory, glory, hallelujah. And I think when you look at uh. The possibility that Northwest quadrant coming in. And and Twilla County generally just becoming a bedroom community without any sustainable tax base in our county. And I think it, when you look at the Romney Group and North Point, I think, I think they're good folks. That want to try and make this happen, and I just really like the idea of giving them the chance to do that.
Thank you, Alan Lark.
I had a question. Uh, if if a hang up happens to be, I. I get that by statute, we can't have a vote, but could we in the RDA or in this agreement? It's Grantsville City, put in a clause where we would have an annual meeting with. Grantsville City Redevelopment Agency, and I say that because would that be, that'd be able to appease the question here that. I'm, I get we won't have a vote. I get that you won't be able to, you know, that's still. Their city council, but at least uh maybe they could hear our our input. And I'm just wondering if that's something that could be maybe written in there. If it would. Everybody.
That's definitely, if that's, if that's a a desirable term to add to the agreement, I would say. Even more than just the annual meeting, just give the school board the ability to. To summon a representative, for lack of a better word, from Grantsville Redevelopment Agency to report on what's going on. Um, I don't think that's an onerous requirement on Grantsville at all. Um, I'm guessing they can deal with that. Yeah. If that's helpful. And and again, that's, that's probably reality anyway, but I'm happy to put it in the agreement.
Yeah, this. Grantsville City Attorney. I think that would be perfectly okay on the term uh from the side of Grantsville City. Uh, as Adam mentioned, Grantsville City will be coming to the school district anyway, at least annually, to report on the budget and to give some. Some information uh about how the project is going. But if um further information is needed, if you need um. Someone to come more often, then we can certainly arrange for that. In terms of having a, either a member of the city council or the mayor come and make that report.
Thank you. Okay, Scott Bryan and then Melissa.
Just. Couple observations. I I guess back to the actual agreement that we're, is being proposed tonight. Um, on page four, you know, we're number four, point four. four, you know, we're number four, point four, it, we're agreeing to a budget that we don't really know what has been adopted by that agency. It says we're, we consent to the project budget is adopted and approved by the agency on the 15th. So that budget hasn't been approved. There's nothing that prevents the Grantsville RDA from adding whatever. I, I don't know that. I think that it gets back to that, that, that concern that I have, that, that I, I fully agree and understand that our motivation and our, our aligned with the developer. I, I'm not always sure that the taxing entities involved are always as aligned as, just based on past history amongst various entities in the community. So I, it, it just feels kind of open right there. I, so my question is, is there a reason why they can't approve a budget and bring it back next month and say, this is what we're proposing? And then we take action on something that's actually approved instead of just?
A, a couple of things. The budget you've seen is the final version. I think even if you wanted to condition approval on that not changing, I see very little chance of that changing before it gets adopted tomorrow, presumably. And also worth noting, the budget doesn't actually control the flow of tax increment dollars or how those dollars are used. It's really just a set of financial projections and answers to questions required by statute. No actual dollars changed regardless of what that budget says. Every, everything involving real money is controlled with the interlocal agreement.
Okay. The, the other concern or observation, and I do not know the statutes recently, I haven't observed or looked at that. But, you know, an example of I think why I wanted voice, and it's not a lot of money. I guess I could just get over it and, you know, to Alan's point, you are dead on, Alan. I, I wholeheartedly agree, and I think that's what sells the project, is that there's no tax dollars involved. I, I, I get we, you know, we're, it's more, anything's more than zero, right? But I, I look at, there's been other entities, not Grantsville, that have given their RDAs a salary out of their administrative expenses. And so they have effectively, as members of the RDA board, have drawn a salary as, you know, in addition to their salary or their, their, you know, their compensation for being on the city council. You know, and it's over $4 million over the courses, at least projected over the course of 30 years. But, you know, those are the kind of things that I feel like having that voice and a vote, having that oversight, you, you know. But those, that's where the, the comfort level is still stuck with me.
And, you know, just, just to clarify, the, the role of the tax entity committee, so the only, the only avenue through which the school district have representatives on any sort of redevelopment agency related board was through a tax entity committee. And the sole purpose of that entity is to approve the flow of tax increment, not day to day agency oversight, simply controlling the flow of dollars that would otherwise go to the tax entity that are instead being paid to the redevelopment agency. So that's the exact same purpose this interlocal agreement serves. But with the interlocal agreement, you actually have more flexibility to put in specific terms if those are, are necessary for a particular tax entity. Or, or in this case, to participate at a different percentage than the rest of the tax entities.
Okay, Melissa.
Um, yes, Alan, you're dead on. Those are not tax dollars we have, and I, I, I agree with you. I'm sorry, I misspoke the way it came out. But we will get those tax dollars because this project is going to be hugely successful. And we, I, I mean, I have, I'm very comfortable with the project, but I appreciate what Josh Romney said a second ago, and maybe also Mr. Long, sorry. I do want to make sure that, and I know you said that it's normal, but we're restating it, that what is not used goes back to the tax entity. And to me, I need it in writing. And if it's redundant, it's, I'm sorry, but it, it at least makes me feel a little better that, I mean, part of the reason I'm comfortable with this project has been from the beginning that the Romneys are not making money on this thing. They're using these, the money to develop the area. And I want to make sure that's what it's used for. And if it isn't used because construction costs are going down or for whatever reason, it comes right back to the school district if it's not used.
Okay. We need to clarify, the Romneys are not making money on this RDA tax increment funding.
Right. That's what I'm saying. That's my point.
And what I'm hearing, so what I've heard in this conversation is that perhaps if we were to entertain a motion, we would want to include that the interlocal agreement or the resolution be approved with some language change that would include whatever language was used in the interlocal agreement with Grantsville City, RDA, and the Lakeview Development Project, including how the money is dispersed and where that money is, goes in the end if not used. And also perhaps an annual sort of report with the school district from that RDA board. Those are the two things I got out of this. Anything else or any other questions? I see pensive faces.
Well, I, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Sorry, Alan. If you'll give me 10 seconds, I'll, I'll post some proposed language to that end in the, in the group chat here.
Can you actually email it to me?
I can do that as well.
So that we can maybe all look at it and make it public?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, Alan, go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna, because I agree with both of those points. I was going to tweak the second. It sounded like Anton had made some offer about a representative of the Grantsville RDA being summonable, essentially being responsive to our request, even if it was more frequently than an annual basis. And I guess I'd be inclined to, to have like a minimum annual requirement subject to, you know, the district requesting more frequent reports or something to that effect.
Okay, well, you work on that little bit of language there. And that would be fine. Are there other? Yeah, go ahead.
Well, I'd just say, with that said, I mean, I, I would move that we approve the interlocal with those modifications.
Resolution, the resolution.
Oh, is it just the resolution? Okay. I remember that we approved the resolution conditioned on, on those modifications, the inclusion of the language that would mirror what the Grantsville RDA has in their agreement with Lakeview, and the annual, if not more common, or if not more frequent reports or however you want to phrase that, from the Grantsville RDA.
I'll second.
Okay. It has been moved by Alan and seconded by Camille to approve the resolution between the Grantsville City Redevelopment Agency and the Tooele County School District regarding the Lakeview Business Park Community Reinvestment Project area, conditioned upon the inclusion of the language that was included in, that will be included with the RDA, between the RDA of Grantsville City and the Lakeview Development Project, and a minimum annual report, a minimum of, an annual report? I don't know. I.
Yeah, a, a minimum report annually, subject to more frequent requests from the school board.
Can I, can I make a, a suggestion, just so we have logistics worked out? So the agency sends out a written report every year. That's required by statute. As far as in-person reporting, I would like to, I think, leave it open to the board to simply request that and say, you know, upon request of the board, Grantsville Redevelopment Agency will report on the status of the project at a public board meeting or work session, essentially whenever. I don't, I don't see any reason to put more complications in this than absolutely necessary. And that gives the school board full flexibility to, to summon someone, summon someone from Grantsville to report.
Hey, Adam. Oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
My, my suggestion for that is, Adam, and, and just to put in some sort of procedure with it, perhaps it could just be done via email to me. If someone, you know, if a representative from the school board were to shoot me an email and say that they need an update from the agency or city council, then I can arrange to, to get that done. You know, the mayor will, will either show up or a member of that board. Then that way, we, we know the exact procedure to have that happen.
As the maker of the motion, I'm amenable to, to that friendly amendment. Oh.
That's an earthquake!
An earthquake?
Oh, my gosh.
Gosh.
You gotta be kidding me.
Did it stop?
You are.
Going downtown.
Guys.
Hey, is everybody okay?
Yeah.
You had the most scared face on Facebook Live. That's what's going to happen.
Somebody go out and look and see if there are other pestilence and other things happening out here. Sorry, Darcy. Locusts.
How much, how much was it shaking out there? It wasn't shaking too much in Salt Lake.
Not too.
There was a lot.
It was big.
Yeah, speak for yourself, Josh. I'm a 12-story and Marone, I still swing.
You're shaking.
Stansberry was shaken.
It was shaken here.
Holy cow. Are we good for me to continue?
Yeah, yes.
Because I was gonna, I was gonna add the, as, as a third condition, what Scott Bryan had mentioned, which was that the project area budget does not change, it's conditioned on the, the budget not changing during or before our final approval. Is, is that consistent with what you were talking about, Scott?
Yeah, I, I mean, you could even just simply say that the budget will not exceed the proposed budget that we've, I've been, that we've seen tonight.
Fair enough.
I mean, I just emailed some language to, even though I just on the Zoom meeting.
I haven't got it yet. I haven't gotten it yet, but I have gotten a text from every one of my children concerned about the quake. It may or may not come.
And I, I can actually share my screen probably and make that work if that's amenable to the board.
I'll move that.
You can try.
Okay, is that blank document now not blank document visible?
Yes.
Can you see well enough to make it work?
Can you enlarge it at all?
Yes, I'm assuming I can. Legible?
Yeah, that works.
I can keep going.
You're good.
Okay. So this first provision would be the return of the tax increment to the district. Essentially, if the agency is unable to utilize the full amount of the tax entity share, and the language in this particular agreement might be different, I cut and paste this, for the uses below. So these are uses that are in the agreement between the agency and the developer, infrastructure, specific infrastructure improvements, then the agency should return to the taxing entity that portion that the agency is unable to utilize. And it may, may require a little bit of wording tweaks just so the defined terms match, but conceptually, that would be the type of language in there. And then the second one is reporting, and just upon request from the district, the Grantsville City Redevelopment Agency will report to the district as the status of development and other activities of the project area. Maybe something like in the, in the manner requested by the district. So whether it's an email report or a representative showing up at a board meeting, I wouldn't anticipate that ever being an issue, but, but certainly we can give the district maximum flexibility to request a report in whatever format.
Anton, could we also have, I mean, I don't know about promptly or immediately or within two weeks or, you know, some kind of timing provision?
Within 14 days? 30 days at the next regular meeting?
14 days.
Yeah, 14 days is fine.
Just so everybody knows, it was a 4.18 earthquake.
And not an aftershock then? Oh, my words.
Wow. Alan, can you restate your motion?
That's an excellent question. I move that we approve the resolution regarding the Lakeview.
Yeah, between.
Between the Tooele County School District and the Grantsville Redevelopment Agency regarding the Lakeview Business Development Project, conditioned upon the additional language regarding the return of tax increment to the taxing entity, requiring a representative of the Grantsville City Redevelopment Agency to report to the district within 14 days of a written request in the manner requested by the district, and limiting the expenditures for infrastructure improvements in the same way that it's limited in the agreement between Grantsville City Redevelopment Agency and Lakeview Business Development Park. And, and I don't know if you put anything on this, Anton, that the, limited to a budget amount laid out in the budget that's been presented to the district.
So, so I would say contingent on the project area budget being approved in its current form by the Grantsville City Redevelopment Agency.
Amen.
Okay. Camille, are you still seconding that?
I will still second it, yes.
Okay, it's been moved by Alan and seconded by Camille to approve resolution, to approve the resolution approving an interlocal agreement between the Grantsville City Redevelopment Agency and the Tooele County School District regarding the Lakeview Business Park Community Reinvestment Project area, conditioned upon the additional language about the return of tax increment and the reporting requirements within 14 days of a written request by the district as stated, as well as limited. within 14 days of a written request by the district as stated, as well as limiting contingent upon the project area budget being approved by the Grantsville Redevelopment Agency as presented in the budget we've looked at tonight. Did I get it all?
Yes.
Okay, Ellen, take it all to you too?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a discussion to that specific motion?
I appreciate the language. Thank you for making me feel a little bit better.
Okay, I don't see any hands. I don't think. Oh, Scott, Brian.
I just wanted to give you the validation that we were listening.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, well, that's all I could, at least I could do. Uh, Ellen, I appreciate those, the, those additions. I, I, I think that while not formally in the agreement, I feel like we need to just at least go on, or I need to go on record and whether the rest of the board does or not. But I, I think we need to go on record that we expect that moving forward, the relationship with Grantsville is, you know, on all other matters, is probably, has some room for improvement. And, and I would expect that those kinds of things would be reciprocated in the future. You know, whether it's building schools and, and charges and taxes and impact fees and, and all those other things that moving forward, while we can't put that and memorialize it in this contract, I would expect that there would be recognition that we're giving up several things here that we came tonight expecting. And moving forward, I would expect that they would reciprocate those kinds of actions in the future.
Thanks. Um, okay, thank you, Scott. Julia? Did you have a comment?
Oh, no. Is my hand raised? Nope, I don't have a comment.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, then, um, Ellen, how do you vote?
I vote I and I wanted to apologize. I've been calling Adam, Anton, so anyway.
It's okay. Okay, Scott, Brian?
Hi.
Camille?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Julia?
Nay.
And I vote I, so motion carries. Thank you. And thank you to Grantsville City and who are on this, um, call as well as the Romney group and the Lakeview Business Park Community Group. Thank you.
Thank you. And, and I will prepare an execution version of this, uh, with the new language in it.
Thank you. And then once it has, you said it's at the Grantsville City Council meeting tomorrow?
Yeah.
So once that's approved, if you will just get it to either myself or Mark and then we can get it signed.
Perfect, will do.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for your help. Okay, moving on, 8.3 Capital Outlay, second read, Steve West.
Good evening. It's good to see you, see everybody. I can see everybody once. They like that. So hey, as, as we, as we looking at this, uh, this is our second read on this. We made a few small changes in it, but nothing drastic. We did have an opportunity to get one of the projects completed at Old Mill Elementary School. So we went ahead and got it done immediately to take care of some safety concerns down there. So that's done. Uh, we was able to reevaluate the budget on the track at repair at Grantsville High School. And, uh, we got somebody to give us a number that was a lot less, so we reduced that amount. Stansberry High School changed the request on their, uh, converted their wood shop into an auto shop, which is good. Uh, they was able to hire another metal shop teacher and a wood shop teacher, so we keep those programs moving. Those are the only real changes in it, uh, than what we had from last month. So, uh, we've still got a couple of big projects there, uh, a couple of those being funded with the sale of the school, uh, baseball field, foot, softball field would be funded from the sale of the bus garage. And then also the transportation building would be funded with the sale of the Harris Elementary School. So, uh, any questions or, uh, on it?
Um, any question, uh, Scott?
Hey, just out of curiosity and not trying to, I have no clue. But how in the world does it cost $20,000 to put a warning track around the outside of a baseball field?
That, that may be a little bit high, but we've got to take all the grass out, redo the sprinkler systems and haul in all the, the top, the, the red soil, the clay. And most of that is an expense in the clay, that soil that goes in out there. So, and it, it's always a conservative estimate to make sure that we have enough money to cover the project and not go over. So if we don't spend it all, we don't spend it.
Well, and, and I understand that. And you've always been good about that. But I just, that was just one thing I thought, for heaven's sakes, it's a three-foot path around the outfield. I mean,
Yeah.
I, I, and I realized maybe you, you do the foul lines, but even then, I'll come dig it for 20,000. I'll just tell you right now.
Scott, is Twill a high and we think they may need a 10-foot warning track?
Yeah.
Until the pitching improves.
Well, based on the baseball they've been playing right now, it's not a concern, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, that, that number would be a little bit high.
Julia, do you have a question?
No, is my hand still, I thought I'd put my hand down. No, I'm good.
Okay. Any other questions? If there aren't, then I think we could approve the capital outlay budget.
I motion, we approve the capital outlay budget for 2020, 2020, 2021.
It's a tongue twister. Is there a second?
Yeah. I'll, I'll second it.
Good. It's been moved by Camille, seconded by Melissa to approve the capital outlay budget for 2020-21 school year. Um, any discussion to that motion? I don't think so. Um, Ellen, how do you vote?
I.
Scott?
I.
Camille?
I.
Melissa?
Hi.
Julia?
Hi.
And I vote I. Motion passes. Thank you, Steve.
Thank, thank you very much.
Thanks for all your work.
You're welcome.
Okay, 8.4 Revised Policy 5004 Student Dress First Read.
Let's do this.
Always controversial, of course, but here we go.
Well, board members, I don't think we need a lot of time on this, even though it is controversial, because I think it needs to be approved as the first read. Uh, what we've done, just to let you know, is, um, you got in your packet dress codes from across districts. Uh, the good news is ours is really a lot like theirs. If I understand my task correctly, uh, from leadership, uh, it was to rewrite it and include some comments from students. So right now, it has comments from students. We met several times with our student body officers. I think, uh, Julia was there, uh, Camille, Marissa and Melissa. And we went through with our good SBOs, uh, they talked to students, some students. I think we could still do more student and parent survey and hold this out for a couple of readings, but, you know, to try to get, there's probably 1,000 or 2,000 different opinions on every word. And we don't want to get lost in the weeds. It essentially, uh, allow, changes, uh, length of shorts to mid thigh instead of just above the knee. It allows shoulders and backs. And it allows hats. And then it changes some other language. So I don't really have a dog in this race, other than I have noticed. I will tell you, uh, when Grantsville ninth graders came to Twill Tech, they had hats on. They were very respectful. I know there are people out there that think of the traditional, hey, uh, you know, from different generations that took their hats off indoors. I don't, I think we're in a different time now. I don't think it means the same thing. I, I think kids rise to the occasion when the expectations are high. I was so impressed with our student body officers that said, hey, we'll, you know, we'll help control this. It, it really comes down to implementation anyway and consistency. So regardless of whether you have 15 prohibitions or 25 prohibitions and what language you have, it's got to come down to the basics of, is it disruptive? Is it safe? And that's got to be based on administrator judgment, administrators act in local parentis. And we could argue all day about what different parents like and don't like. So it is what it is. I just tried to pull those without making it biased. I could have put my own thoughts on there, just like each one of you could, but I just took, uh, and I, and I provided you not only this first draft, but I provided you a list of the comments that, from the kids, that came from the kids in, in red document. So that's it.
And just a reminder, those kids were the student body presidents from all of our area high schools. So I think this is a first read, so we do need to get it out there. I don't know that we need to make a lot of changes tonight. I think it's something that where everybody should look over and write down suggestions for improvement. If you have any, we should get it out there so parents and students and teachers and administrators can take a look and send in their comments and then maybe look those over and tweak from there.
Send your additions to me in a different color or a different font or italicized or whatever. And I'll incorporate them in and you guys can remove what you want and add what you want. And there we go.
So unless there is something, um, glaring that somebody wants to adjust tonight, I would say we, let's just approve it for a second reading, get it out there.
Just an observation or feedback is, I, when I looked at Nebo's policy compared to ours, uh, I felt like Nebo's was pretty much the same as ours. I mean, it kind of had the basic, the same, what constraints, recommendations, I, I, but I felt like it read a lot better. I, I, just the observations, we have these really long paragraphs that I felt like when I read Nebo's, it, i- if I was a student or a parent reading ours versus Nebo's, I feel like I have more direction and a little bit of better understanding and I, um,
Right. And remember that the only changes I made were in red, so that's the way it was written. It was probably that way from the model policy manual. Uh, I wouldn't choose to write it that way either. And so I, we can adopt any language that you guys like. But I didn't want to.
A lot of some language on, frankly, I, I thought Nebo's really mirrored ours in a lot of ways, but, um, I, anyway, just a little bit of feedback and an observation. And I don't know if it's taking time to kind of, just look at the format. It, it, o- ours looks really wordy compared.
I would be, I would be happy to read through Nebo's and ours together and see if we could check out language and make it more like that if you'd like.
I, I, I really liked that. And, and I did like the fact that they allow hats. You know, that was one observation. It's like, you know, but the way they stated it, I thought it was good. Anyway, just observation.
That would be great. Pick and choose your battles, you know, and I think kids will rise to the occasion. So it is a little bit more lenient. Frankly, most of our high schools are already doing hats. They kind of, uh, piloted that for us. And gosh, the sky didn't fall and oh, well, I was gonna say the world didn't end, but I'm not so sure anymore.
It's iffy. I, I did send all of the board members, I received two emails today in regards to the dress code already, the one that was read tonight and then one other one that I came earlier in the day and I did forward them to all of you. See if those comments as well.
I move to approve, can I make a motion?
You are in the process. Go ahead.
Hey, I moved to, oh geez, now my.
5004.
Yeah, to, I'm sorry, you guys, my thing went down. Okay, to, um, move the 5004 to a second read.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, it's been moved by Melissa and seconded by Camille to approve, um, Policy 5004 Student Dress Code for a second read. Any discussion to that motion? Okay, uh, Ellen, how do you vote?
I.
Scott?
I.
Camille?
I.
Melissa?
I.
Julia?
I.
And I vote I. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, new policy, testing procedures and standards, second read. Um, Deb, do you have anything else to say about it?
Um, no, good evening. This policy might not seem so relevant at this time because we're in the middle of a suspension statewide mandated testing for the remainder of this year, but it will prove to, hopefully prove more so for the upcoming 2021 school year. I'm not aware, there's, we haven't made any changes since the first one and I'm not aware of any public comments, so.
We haven't received any that I, that I got. I don't think so. Okay.
I motion, we approve policy, sorry, my.
You don't have a number yet.
Oh, the new policy, testing procedures and standards.
For, okay, just approved?
Yeah.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second. Go ahead, Ellen.
The move by Camille and seconded by Ellen to approve the new policy, testing procedures and standards for implementation. Any discussion to that motion?
I just have a question. Why, why is this policy, is this in state mandate? What, what change? You know, why do we have this policy? We haven't had a policy on this for years.
This came about from the model policies that were looked at by the SASEE group. And that was in the list of model policies and.
It came from a bill.
Yeah. There is, there is some, um, new requirements that are included in this, like the reporting by September 15th of each year, um, what your testing plan is and, and those, that's relatively new. That was implemented last school year. Um, so there's been those types of additional requirements put on districts. Um, we have just never had one before.
But those requirements came from board rule.
Work of the SASEE group.
Yeah. Any other questions? Thanks, Deb. Okay, Julia, how do you vote?
I.
Melissa?
I.
Camille?
I.
Scott?
I.
Ellen?
I.
And I vote I. Policy is approved. Thank you, Deb. Okay, 8.6 New Policy, Twill County School District, LEA-specific license endorsement policy. Winn Porter.
Good evening.
Hi.
Hi. Um, first of all, I'm glad everyone's being safe and thank you. Uh, the HR department's, uh, functioning and if there's any questionings that, uh, we can assist anybody with, please feel free to email or call us. Just a little background on this policy, it's not, it's new to our board, but not new for an LEA-specific policy that has been in the past going to the state school board for approval. Um, our best practice, of course, is to hire licensed teachers. When that's not available, then we go to, uh, the best qualified candidate. And this policy, the LEA-specific policy would help them in a path to show how they can achieve their licensing. Um, in the past, we've had teachers that get, receive an LEA-specific policy and it feels like a landing page for them and that they're a teacher for us. And we want to make sure that we're following through with, uh, state guidelines and requirements. So this new policy follows, um, Utah administrative rule and is pretty close to that rule going down through it. It is just a first read. A couple of typo corrections I made on it today that I will update and have for the second read. Um, any questions as of right now from the school board members?
I sent in some earlier to win just some typos and grammatic errors. She made note of, but anything else?
I, I do have a question on 3A. Let me find it. Is, I noticed that the application that says, ask me approved by the school, the. Is, I noticed that the application, it says, has to be approved by the school, the board. Is that again?
That's new.
Is that a requirement?
It is.
Yes, so after
We have to approve these?
Yes.
Yes. So after July 1, and comes, so next, so August or September, we'll come to the school board meeting with the number where, if we have 50 LEA-specific licenses, we'll bring those to you, probably in the form of consent calendar that you had approved them. They can be approved for one, two, and up to three years for that individual teaching that class. After that three years, if there's been no progress made for them receiving what is called an associate license, which would be the same as the past level one license, then their job could be, come up for opening again for a position. Obviously, they're at-will employees that could be renewed every year if we needed to go that direction. After the associate license, they could then move on to receiving a professional license, as long as they're showing growth and following a plan that we now have to, it was, these plans were put together by the ARL and the APT plans from the state. And they now fall onto the district to, to provide those plans.
Does, does this need to go to a second read? Because this is the first time. Did I see?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I move to do a second read for the new policy, Twill County School District LEA-specific license endorsement.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
The move by Melissa and seconded by Camille to approve the new Twill County School District LEA-specific license endorsement policy for a second read. Any discussion to that motion? Okay, I'm going to start with Camille. How do you vote?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Julia?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Alan?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion passes. Thank you, Win. Okay, revised policy 6031 Sexual Harassment, second read. Trisha Walker.
Hi, how are you guys tonight?
Good, how are you?
Oh, living the dream. So today I have a second read for sexual harassment. I don't think there were any comments on this. This was just making sure that we were in line with any changes that we needed to make. We also included, although it's not with the policy, with the first read, the sexual harassment complaint report form that we updated that we will put onto our webpage through HR. So any questions?
Any questions from anyone? Otherwise, I think we can approve for implementation. I don't see any questions. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the sexual harass, harassment policy for implementation.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
It's been moved by Julia and seconded by Camille to approve policy 6031 Sexual Harassment for its implementation. Any discussions to that motion? Okay, Camille, how do you vote?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Julia?
Yes.
Alan?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion passes. Thank you, Trish.
Thank you.
Okay, revised policy 7002 Volunteers in Schools, Jeff Hamm.
Yes, ma'am. So we would, we were asked, board meeting before last, just go back through the language and, and kind of make it a little more comprehensive and explanatory to those to our potential volunteers. And what you see is Section C, we created a separate Section C just regarding the application process to kind of define all those terms that, that you guys asked about earlier. And then under the background check part, we added numbers two, three, and four to spell that out. So I wasn't sure if there were other, basically has the kitchen sink now with all the language. And, and we can add or delete as you see fit. So just waiting for your direction.
I appreciate it. I think it looks great. So if you're all right with it, Marissa, I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I motion, I motion, we go ahead and approve policy 7002 for implementation.
Okay, is there a second?
I second.
Camille and seconded by Melissa to approve policy 7002 Volunteers in Schools for Implementation. Any discussion to that motion? Scott, do you have your hand raised or no?
I do have my hand raised.
Okay, go ahead.
Do that early in the meeting. I, I've been trying to be
I'm so impressed.
Yes, so you know, I, I'm graduating to asking questions now. So hey, do, do we charge, is there a cost to this?
Not for volunteers.
That's, I didn't know. That's what I'm, I didn't know the answer to that.
Um, it don't, isn't there a charge to get a background fee?
No, not for volunteers.
Well, not to them. We do pay for that.
Yeah, the district covers it. This, should that be, should that be noted in this policy?
Uh, so I included we included the volunteer information form also. I don't know if you guys saw that as well, just to make the same language. I mean, we'd be happy to say free of charge on there somewhere if you'd like us to do so. But yeah, that's to them, there's no cost.
I think if we have that, it could just be on that volunteer information sheet, because most volunteers are going to look at that, not the actual policy.
Okay. Yeah, that's easy. That's an easy fix.
But the principal, but they have to get this form from the principals. Do they still have to get it from the principals? Because they have to sign it, right?
So
The principals, most principals that I've talked to, I mean specifically tell the volunteers that as well.
Yeah, that's correct. Yep.
But doesn't hurt.
Yeah, I'm happy to, do you just want me to put it on the form, or do you want me to put it in the actual policy?
If it's redundant, I don't care. I guess there was a little bit of confusion even amongst us, so I didn't know. I didn't know if that was something that was you know, that mattered at all, but it was not.
Why don't we just put it on the volunteer information form? There is no charge.
Okay. Okay, no problem.
I'm, can I make a
Um.
Melissa? Oh, then, oh, you're right, we did. Sorry.
We have a motion. So if there aren't any other questions, then Julia, how do you vote?
Yes.
Melissa?
Um, yes.
Camille?
Yes.
Scott?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Thanks. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you very much.
Okay, 8.9 Revised Policy 5015 Child Abuse and Neglect, first read. First read, right?
It is.
Okay, and we have Dolly, Assistant Superintendent Doline Pitt.
So as you can see, this one hasn't been revised since 2008. So as we went back through and looked, there were just a couple things that we wanted to add for clarification for people, for teachers, if they do have to report to DCFS. You can see at the bottom, other than that, we didn't change anything. So I, I don't know if it needs to go on to a second reading or not, where we just added some clarification.
Okay. I don't know that it really does. Unless the maker of the motion thinks it needs a second read, I would entertain a motion to approve this policy.
I motion, we approve policy 5015 for implementation.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
It's been moved by Camille and seconded by Melissa to approve policy 5015 Child Abuse and Neglect for Implementation. Any discussion to that motion? Okay, Alan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Camille?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Julia?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion passes. We made it through. What?
We adjourned.
You moved to adjourn? And seconding by Clapton?
I will second it. Flouting.
Okay, thanks, everybody.
Not, not the adjournment, a successful Zoom board meeting.
I know, it's a little bit hard, but we did it. Good job. Okay, we are adjourned.